Hey, good to see you.
I am.
We call the meeting to order. We'll have a pledge and prayer led by Councilmember Michael Proctor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father God, thank you so much for the wonderful community you've given to us to live in, thrive in, and to assist in governing and making decisions for today and in the future. Your wisdom in guiding our decisions and your leading in this meeting in Jesus' name.
Item C, approval of the agenda. There were a few changes. E point one and E point two switched, and then we added H point seven.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Sarah. Second by Larry. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Item D, citizens' comments.
Everybody from the audience that would like to say a few words in three minutes? The reluctance is kind of making me nervous now.
Okay, hi. My name is Les Laitre, and I am here to request that you, the city of Goddard, add UTVs to their golf cart ordinance. I have given him the Kansas State statute and the City of Clearwater ordinance. I'm going to reference Clearwater a lot because that's where my husband is from, and that's actually where we go ride our UTV right now. In case you don't know what a UTV is, it's considered a worksite utility vehicle. They are equipped with headlights, taillights, seat belts, bucket seats. So, in my personal opinion, they are actually safer than the golf carts that are allowed in the city of Goddard right now. The State of Kansas Ordinance 815-100 allows UTVs to be operated on city and county roads provided the city allows them as long as the operator has a valid driver's license. It also states that they may be used to cross state and federal highways, but they cannot be operated on those highways. So, like, you can cross Kellogg, but you can't drive on Kellogg. The City of Clearwater ordinance aligns with the state statute, but it requires the UTVs to be registered within the city as well as have liability insurance at a minimum. You can register them in the state of Kansas as a vehicle. However, if we were to go that route and register it in the state of Kansas, Goddard still has to approve because Goddard trumps the state statute, apparently. So, I can answer any questions that you have, but that's about all I got.
What's the desire for this?
To be able to tool around, go to the country roads. They're, I mean, they're off-road vehicles, but they can be, they can be used just like golf carts, basically. It'll allow us to get more use out of it, basically.
What's the thread and what's the safety aspects?
I'm going to let Lance talk about it a little bit, too, but I think the big concern that we would have is, one, that they are considerably faster than golf carts. I mean, what's the top speed on a golf cart? Fifteen, twenty miles an hour, maybe. Some of these things can do in excess of sixty miles an hour, depending on the size of them. And while, like, I've got one, but it's, you know, it's got headlights and taillamps on it, doesn't have turn signals and all that. I think our big concern would probably be just how fast they can go and who can operate them. I mean, are we going to have kids under sixteen operating them on city streets? I mean, that, those are all the things that are going to have to be kind of fleshed out. I think Lance has probably done more research on it than he has.
So, it would take a little bit of thought and investigation into that, and I would want to provide the council with as much information safety-wise and maybe input from the community as well before, you know, I could just speak on maybe behalf of the safety side and the legal side. But there's, you know, there, how is certain things like child safety seats, you know, we have to, obviously, that's not going to be something that the feds anticipated with the use of these vehicles. I've been in lots of communities where they've been utilized, more recreational communities. They have a use and a part. I don't know if that would maybe be the same kind of societal usage here in our community or not. So, that's maybe something they can take into consideration, but I definitely want to give them some guidance as to any studies that have been done in communities where they've operated for a while.
I tried to, you know, Google's your best friend, tried to figure out, like, golf cart accidents versus UTV accidents. The bad thing, the hardest part for me was that a UTV is not an ATV, and you get a lot of ATV accidents, of course.
I would want to, like, really get down to the people on the boots on the ground necessarily, or like, other law enforcement entities that are dealing with any issues that come up that may not be reported in a reportable, like, report fashion, but kind of see what they might have in account.
I would recommend definitely going through, like, contacting, sorry, Clearwater.
Yeah. The only difference I kind of think of with us and Clearwater is that they don't have US Highway going directly through it with thousands upon thousands of cars traveling through every day.
Right. They do have K-42, though.
They're also not going to have the neighborhood sizes that we do. There's going to be noise issues again. It's just going to take some time. I wouldn't make a ruling on this anytime soon.
I think, I think what we probably should do is we should have maybe look into what's the safety aspects. I think, Brian, another thing to maybe look into is the noise difference in ATVs compared to golf carts. You know, I think the last thing that this city might want is a bunch of noise compliance.
Right.
But, I mean, I don't, I don't know what the community would really want, but then that's, that's kind of our job to tap into what they would like to say.
Yeah, we're kind of, staff level, we're kind of flat-footed. I mean, we don't know enough about it at this point.
Another thing I might think of is, we've allowed golf carts to be allowed through the use of a permit. It's not very much, but just that physical step of being permitted, having the slow-moving emblem sign on the back, ensuring that it's insured with a registered driver. And we still have people with golf carts that don't do it.
But, do they not do it because they're not aware that they're required to?
No, they're, no, they're given a copy of everything that's required when they get their permit, every year.
Right, but the people who aren't permitting them don't know that they're supposed to permit them, is what I'm saying.
I think he's talking about the ones that are permitted.
They're aware of it.
Okay, gotcha.
There just may be unintended consequences, and it's probably something, you can't really compare them as apples to apples because they're two totally different beasts.
And I guess my thinking on the UTVs, the concern with them crossing Kellogg, how is it any different than a motorcycle who is completely less protected? It can go just as fast as the motorcycle. They don't have seat belts, they don't have the cage around them that the UTV does. The speed issue, there's, they have to follow the speed limit signs just like everybody else. They're required to follow the driver's license requirements just like cars and golf carts. So, I guess that's kind of my thinking on it. They're all valid points, but I think if, if we do change the statute, I don't think it should be included with the golf carts. I think it should be its own, with its own set of rules, because they are completely different ones, apples ones, oranges. So, that's just my thinking on it.
Well, we're not telling you no, Leslie.
Oh, no, 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 no. I wasn't expecting anything. I just, like I said, I want you to consider it.
I never liked making sausage on the bench. I don't know if you've ever done that.
What?
We don't mind doing that, so.
That's always so wrong.
So, we're, we're not, we're not going to tell you no, but if you could, please, your number, and we'll, we'll try to get as much information.
Do you need her address?
Absolutely.
Can you repeat your address for him for the record?
Oh, I never said it. It's nine three eight North St. Andrews Court.
There's not a St. Andrews number.
Shut up, Sarah.
That was a throwback, right?
Yeah. And do you want my phone number?
I'll get it. Sarah, have it?
Yes, she has it.
Sarah, that's a little fluffing it out.
I mean, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else that would like to say a few words? Nope? Okay. Next time.
You guys, come on up here. Hey, you're not the chief yet, so you don't get to boss anybody around for just a couple of minutes. Governing body, I'm going to kind of give you a quick history on this, this program that, I'll give it to Kelly. She, she knows how to take something, run with it. A couple of years ago, Ashley Miller, the principal over at Oak Street Elementary, hit us up about, they were trying to do some fundraising, and the fire department came in, and they were going to offer, suppose, a free trip to the fire, on the fire truck or something like that. We're like, well, we can't be beat by them. So, we started this chief for a day program, and then because of social media, Kelly hears about it, like, well, they got it, I wanted. So, we, we've done it now a couple of times with them, and, and basically, we auction off a, a police chief for a day that goes towards their fundraising. And this year's winner, actually, this would have been 2020's winner, right?
This past?
This past school year, is Lauren Applegate because her, her mom and dad, Clayton and Cheryl, were kind enough to, to put in a nice bid for it. So, I'm going to give you a little bit of history on, on Lauren. She's going to be a sixth grader at Holy Spirit Catholic Church. She has an older brother, Ethan, who's going to be a senior at Bishop Carroll. Obviously, she plays softball with the Cheetahs. Is it Cheetah or Cheetor?
Cheetahs.
Okay, Cheetahs, okay. She's been with the same team since before she was in kindergarten, so that was, what, three years ago? She loves school and looks forward to being in middle school, and she's pretty excited. She seems like she's kind of shy, so I'm going to kind of get this over with pretty quickly. But what we're going to do is administer an oath, and then I'm going to give her a badge, and then tomorrow, she's going to go hang out with me and Captain Beagle and some of the other guys and kind of see what it's like to do my job. Now, Lance is a little bit concerned because she might be in the running. He's got some competition now, so. All right, so we're going to, we're going to give you the oath of office, okay? So, you've got to repeat after me. So, turn and raise your hand and repeat after me, okay? Your right hand. Okay. I, Lauren Applegate, promise that I will always study hard in school.
Promise to always study hard in school.
Listen to my mom and dad.
Listen to my mom and dad.
Say that one again.
Listen to my mom and dad.
Okay, that's good.
Say it a third time.
And be a good example to other kids.
And be a good example to other kids.
I will treat everyone fairly.
I'll treat everyone fairly.
And with respect.
And with respect.
And be a good police chief for the people of Goddard.
And be a good police chief for the people of Goddard.
So, help me God.
So, help me God.
There you go. Okay, so that's done, and then you're going to sign that so that we have something. Remember, you've got to get that back tomorrow, okay? There's your badge, and then tomorrow at eight o'clock, you're ready to go to work. And I think your dad's going to go with us, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So, congratulations. And Mayor, you want to say anything to her, or are we going to take a picture?
Good luck.
You've got to sign your name right here. This is an official document. I'm going to give you a copy of it, and you'll have some proof from this.
Ashley, what's your feeling about doughnuts?
Oh, see, do you hear what he said?
Joke's already started.
What's your feelings about doughnuts? That's not even funny, is it?
Are you a Krispy Kreme type girl or something, something else?
Might be a little out of your jurisdiction. Lamar's, man.
We have an unmarked car, we, and a gas car. We can go wherever we want. Okay, so I'm going to give you that to take with you, and then I will see you at eight o'clock in the morning. You want to take a picture with the mayor? Because he is, he is kind of your boss. Throw that out there. Here, come on over here. Are we going to do it up there?
Yeah.
Lance?
Number one. That's funny, because that's my number two. It says on the back.
Oh, yeah. Hey.
All right, there you go. Kelly's been so great to work with over at Holy Spirit and at the school, and I'm going to miss her.
Thank you.
All right, so, thank you, guys. I guess you're not going to do this part, but I'll have to do it for you.
Okay.
But obviously, we're going to announce today, this is going to be the last council meeting that Chief Ferris will have to endure. And we have a little plaque for him, so I'll just kind of read what's on the board there. He served for the police department for the last four years, thirty-one years total in law enforcement. I think, kind of like most of us when we get into law enforcement, realize we want to serve the public. He started as a firefighter, and when he realized it wasn't really all it was cracked up to be, not as many calls for cats and trees, he decided to get on with the Kansas City Metropolitan Police Department, and then from there, went to Lenexa Police Department, which took up many of the years for law enforcement, and the last four have been here. So, we, we wish Fred luck. There's been a lot of memorable moments here, and I think you're going to enjoy time at the lake, time flying, and you're always, always welcome to come back and harass us. So, thank you for, thank you for everything that you've done. Thank you specifically for everything you've done for me, and we wish you well.
And if that's okay, I'd just like to say a few words before.
Sorry, I have a sort of off on you on here.
Got them all?
All right, bring it in, boys.
Bring it in.
Geez.
Not too bad. Okay, if you'll indulge me for just a few minutes, Matt, I know you're watching the timer, but I'm gonna try and make, Matt, sorry. Matt keeps me on track most of the time.
My mind is already gone.
So, I believe that God puts opportunities in front of us and we have a couple of choices. We can run, we can step over them and ignore it, or we can accept it. And in 2017, one such opportunity was presented to me and it took me out of my comfort zone at the perfect time in my career. Coming to Goddard was one of the best decisions I've made. I've loved serving this community in the fastest four years of my life. Been a few challenges, a lot of successes, and I owe it all to some amazing people. To the governing bodies, past and present, that gave me a chance and had the confidence in me to lead this department, thank you for caring for your community the way you do and making this a best city to live or work in in the Wichita metro. To Brian Selkopp, there he is. Thanks for being a boss and a mentor and a friend and for seeing the vision I had for the police department. Couldn't have asked for a better colleague and appreciate our many discussions. To the city staff, Matt, Terry, Micah, Brooke, Kathy, Lori, Sarah, everyone at Public Works. You make this a great city to live in and visit. You all do the work of twice a staff and take great pride in what you do and the citizens really do appreciate you. To the other city leaders, stakeholders, community members, thank you for your support and friendship. I'll never forget you all. To Captain Lance Beagle, thank you for being the leader that helped move things forward and trusting an outsider to come into your house. Your leadership is only taught by your friendship, work ethic, and character, and you're gonna take this PD far into the future. To Sergeant Circle and Heron, thank you for being solid leaders that were open to new ideas and implementing all the changes that has taken place the last four years. Sergeants are the backbone of any police department and you are two of the best in the business. To my officers, Phillip Shealite, Devon Keith, Steven Perez, Christian Correio, Ryan Mings, Tyler Prittl, James Chancellor, Trey Roney, Jason Wolf, who I haven't seen in about two years, but he's still part of this family, and our CSO Asia Fulcher. You embody what true community policing is and are an example of what citizens want to see in their police departments. You do great police work and are also the face of this police department. Both things you do extremely well. My advice, tune out the negative white noise in the world today, continue to grow, take care of each other, and know that what you do each and every day matters. This is still a noble profession. I will continue to watch you grow from a distance. We'll always be here if you need something and we'll pray for your safety and health. To my beautiful wife, Lee, and my incredible daughters, Jessica and Ellen, who's watching from somewhere in Florida right now, thank you for being my foundation and biggest cheerleaders for the last thirty-one years. I would never have had the courage to take such a leap four years ago without your support and I can't wait for the next chapter we will all enjoy together. Thank you again. I appreciate all of you greatly. And I'm gonna sit down now.
Thank you, Fred.
Okay.
Item approved, what are the distinct agenda?
Second.
Motion by Larry, second by Michael. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item G, conduct a public hearing to review the CDBG grant program.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor and City Council, a quick background and first a quick order of operations here for this gen item. First, we're gonna need a motion to open the public hearing. We'll receive and file comments of the public. And then at the very end, we'll have a motion to close the public hearing. This is published in the city newspaper. There's no resolution or ordinance. This is a state requirement just to close our community development block grant coronavirus, the funding that we received from that. So a quick background, COVID-19 pandemic inflicted an economic toll on businesses around the nation. And in Goddard, the federal government issued a special type of community development block grant, CDBG, called CDBGCV, which is the coronavirus with C V part. Cities applied through their state commerce department to qualify. The city of Goddard applied for the grant with the approval of resolution number twenty dash ten on June first, 2020. The city received one hundred thirty-two thousand from the Kansas Department of Commerce. After receiving the funds, the city of Goddard sent out flyers encouraging businesses to apply to the city for funds if they qualified based on preset parameters dictated by the housing urban development department and federal government, H U D. Grant application was first come first scurved and expired after one year. Once all grants had been expended, the city was required to hold a public hearing to begin the close-up process and receive feedback from the recipients and any other interested party on effectiveness, effectiveness in program and any improvements that could be made. This public hearing was published in the city newspaper, allowing one week to lapse if we're holding the meeting. And this is just gonna be a quick analysis. Total businesses were awarded were seven, total number of jobs retained, twenty-four, total cash disbursement was one hundred and thirty-two thousand. Low to moderate income LMI is a target indicator that the state and federal government requires. Total LMI achieved was eighty-five percent. Our target was fifty-one. So basically, that means that of the jobs that were retained, fifty-one percent of them had to be LMI. LMI is dictated by your family size and your income. And so fifty-one percent of jobs retained had to be LMI qualified and we were able to get eighty-five percent. So the money went to the right people. Cedric County median income was seventy-two thousand and as you can see, that was well spent. These are the businesses that received them. We had seven in total. August Auto, Blingin Things, Doggy Boutique, Four Feathers, Iron Nutrition, Midwest Building Supply Co., and Mrs. Cole's Tropical Snow. Their small cost associated publication is approved as to form. At this point, the mayor, if you would, will open for public comments and any individuals who wish to speak on it can. After which, the mayor will close public comments and we'll move on to closing the public meeting.
Open the public comments?
If you wish to speak, can.
No? Aye.
Seeing none. You didn't close it?
Open comments?
It's recommended that the council receive all the comments and close the public hearing. It is come.
Make the motion to close the public hearing.
Motion by Sarah, second by Michael. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good.
Very good. That is it. Thank you.
Item H1, consider Arbor Creek Phase Two Respread Petition Resolutions for Sanitary Sewer, Stormwater Sewer, Paving, and Water Improvements to Unoccupied Phase One Lots. Honorable Mayor and Council, and if anyone in the audience has trouble seeing, let me know and we can dim, dim the lights. Same from the bench, please. These are amended petitions, or you'll see them also referred to as repetitions. We have agenda items H.1A through H.1D. I'll go through the analysis and recommendations at the same time, but we'll present each one individually by a vote of the governing body at the very end. Back on May sixth is when these resolutions that are being amended were initially approved. Nineteen oh seven for sanitary sewer, nineteen oh nine for storm water, nineteen eleven for paving, and nineteen thirteen for the water distribution improvements. The amount of the authorized improvement was eighty thousand for sanitary sewer, two hundred and seventeen for storm water, five hundred and seventeen thousand for the paving collector, and another hundred and fifty-four thousand for the water distribution collector. The improvements were financed a hundred percent within the district with nothing at the city at large. The amended petitions occurred within, are normal and occur frequently within the metropolitan Wichita metro area. We've done it recently for St. Andrews, Cloverleaf, and Elk Ridge. And this is often done to offset either changes in drainage or plating or construction cost increases that have occurred over the interim. And that helps to more evenly spread the special assessment costs throughout the phases. Approval of these resolutions will not impact any of the current phase one homeowners and only impact the vacant lots owned by the developer or those under construction currently for the contractor-owned lots. Of course, that means that when I show you this next map here, that the vacant lots in phase one will see the, the estimated bid cost, or, I'm sorry, monthly specials go from one forty-seven eighty-four to an estimate of one sixty-eight eighty-two. So there'll be twenty-one dollar, twenty dollar change per month to those to cover the, the increased cost of construction. Now, what this shows is the red here is phase one with the purple being phase two. The initial engineer's estimate was a hundred and eighty-three dollars and seventy-six cents. The post-bid construction cost was one forty-seven eighty-four and the proposed repetition at two and a half percent increases that amount to one sixty-eight eighty-two for the unoccupied red lots. Now, the second phase has an engineer's estimate of two hundred and seven dollars and fifty-one cents with that being spread, reduced it by thirteen dollars to one ninety-four eleven, estimating a two and a half percent interest cost. So the red here is the existing phase one with phase two, which will also consider these improvements following the respread agreement going forward. And the next agenda item. Phase one authorization amount has that one percent inflator. Of course, this is, is not, it's, it's no longer relevant, but initially it was eighty thousand, two hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred and seventeen thousand, and a hundred and fifty-four thousand. The letter of credit that is on each of these is at twenty-eight thousand for sanitary sewer, seventy-five nine fifty for storm water, one eighty-nine fifty for the paving, and fifty-three nine for the water improvement. Fifty percent, at fifty percent occupancy is released with the full release of the letters of credit occurring at eighty percent occupancy, which essentially mirrors that of the city of Wichita, our big brother to the, to the east. There's no direct cost to the city from the acceptance of the petition, the repetitions, and the adoption of the resolution as the entire project cost is borne by the petitioning through the special assessment process and subsequently recouped through that process. The proposed documents have been constructed by bond counsel Kevin Cowan and Gilmore and Bell and reviewed by our city attorney Ryan Peck and approved as to form. It's recommended that the city council, if there aren't any questions over any of the improvements that we've mentioned so far, proceed with the acceptance of the petitions by the adoption of the resolution authorizing the improvement.
Any questions?
And we'll just go through H.1A, B, C, and D in, in order. So the motion would be to accept the petition and adopt the proposed resolution authorizing and providing for the making of sanitary sewer Arbor Creek Collector improvements and amending, restating, and repealing Resolution nineteen dash oh seven. And that can be done with a voice vote.
Motion?
Make the motion.
Motion by Larry.
Second.
Second by Michael. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Resolution twenty-one dash twenty-four. Item H.1B, it is the recommendation to accept the petition and adopt the proposed resolution authorizing and providing for the making of storm water sewer Arbor Creek Edition Collector improvements and amending, restating, and repealing Resolution nineteen dash oh nine.
Motion?
Motion.
Motion approved.
Motion by Michael.
Second.
Second by Sarah. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Resolution twenty-one dash twenty-five. Item H.1C, it is recommended that the, that the city council accept the petition to adopt and propose the proposed resolution authorizing and providing for the making of paving improvement, Arbor Creek Edition Collector, and amending, restating, and repealing Resolution nineteen dash eleven.
Motion?
So motion.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Michael. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Resolution twenty-one dash twenty-six. Item H.1D, it is recommended that the city council accept the petition and adopt the proposed resolution authorizing and providing for the making of water distribution system improvements for Arbor Creek Edition Collector and amending, restating, and repealing Resolution nineteen dash thirteen.
Motion approved.
Motion by Michael.
Second.
Second by Sarah. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Resolution twenty-one dash twenty-seven. Item H.2 Arbor Creek Phase Two Petitions and Authorization Resolutions. Essentially restating what, what we've previously covered here and, and reaffirming that it's a hundred percent borne by the district, by the improvement district, zero by the city at large. Approval of the resolutions will not impact any current phase one homeowners and only impact the developer and contractor-owned lots, but this is phase two. So, again, it's for phase two only and contained entirely within. Phase two improvement authorization amount includes a one percent per month inflator as it did previously for phase one. It equates for item H.2A, the sanitary sewer resolution, authorizing amount of a hundred and sixty-five thousand, and that is assessed at one twenty-sixth. So it's equally assessed at one twenty-sixth per, per lot for the assessment. Storm water is at a hundred and twenty-one thousand with a one twenty-sixth lot assessment. Paving is three hundred and eighty-nine thousand and that's at one twenty-fourth lot assessment. Water is one hundred and fifty-seven thousand, also at one twenty-fourth assessment. And of course, this obviously will ultimately incur the temp note interest and then whatever those interest amounts are on the geo bond permanent financing as we go forward. It's a twenty-year special assessment general obligation bond after a four-year general obligation temp note. Also includes the thirty-five percent letter of credit, which equates to fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty, plus the applicable inflator for sanitary sewer. And you can go ahead and see the amounts there. Fifty-nine thousand, eight fifty for storm water, a hundred and thirty-six thousand, one hundred and fifty for paving, and fifty-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty for water, all with the applicable monthly inflator. Again, fifty percent release, letters of credit at fifty percent occupancy and the full at eighty percent. No direct cost associated from the petition as it's borne through the special assessment statutes. Publications covered and recovered within that process. The documents have been constructed by city bond counsel Kevin Cowan and Gilmore and Bell and reviewed as to form and approved by city attorney Ryan Peck. And this will be effective upon publication of the final news. What you see here is, and it's also included in the staff report for item H.2A, sanitary sewer improvement, just reaffirming the authorization amount, letter of credit amount, the, just a general synopsis of what we just covered at the one twenty-sixth assessment and showing you that essentially we're improving the lots here in, in green with the darker green line being the actual lines under construction for, for moving the sanitary sewer and then stubs into the existing phase one mains. There are no questions over the sanitary sewer petition and resolution. It is recommended that the city council accept the petition and adopt the proposed resolution authorizing and providing for the making of sanitary sewer improvements for Arbor Creek Phase Two.
Motion to approve this proposal.
Motion by Michael.
Second.
Second by Sarah. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Resolution number twenty-one dash twenty-eight. Item H.2Bs, the storm water sewer collector improvement with the authorized amount of a hundred and seventy-one thousand, fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty, letter of credit. It's assessed one twenty-sixth, the total improvement cost, and that's kind of here in the, in the lighter purple and shows stub across the road and into the existing storm water system just off of Brookside Court. If there are no questions over the storm water sewer, it is recommended that the city council accept the petition and adopt the proposed resolution authorizing and providing- council accept the petition and adopt the proposed resolution authorizing and providing for the making of storm water sewer Arbor Creek Edition Phase Two improvements.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Question? Motion by Michael, second by Sarah. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passed.
Resolution 21-29.
Item H.2C is paving improvements with an authorized amount of 800, I'm sorry, 389,000 with a letter of credit of 136,150, and it's apportioned at 124th per lot, and that's the gray area here and kind of shows the darker gray paving with the approaches into Green Bell Street and off of Brookside to carry that Lot 1, Block 3 off of Brookside and Thicket Lane. If there are no questions over the paving portion for Phase Two, it is recommended that the city council accept the petition and adopt the proposed resolution authorizing and providing for the making of pavement improvement Arbor Creek Edition Phase Two. All right, a motion to approve.
Motion by Michael.
Second.
Second by Sarah. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Resolution 21-30.
Item H.2D is the water distribution system improvements. The authorized amount's 157,000. The letter of credit requirement for that's 54,950, and it's also assessed at 124th, the total cost of the improvement, and that is in light blue for the lots and dark blue for the actual main, which runs from Arbor Creek Street down Rivendell and stubs into Crabtree Lane before it kind of does a short T branch and progresses down to the end of Lot 29. There's also a short main extension off of the primary main at Brookside and Thicket If there are no questions over the water improvement, it is recommended to accept the petition and adopt the proposed resolution authorizing and providing for the making of water distribution system improvements for Arbor Creek Edition Phase Two.
As Brooklyn, they put the water lines in, do they have any kind of a tracer line that you can use to find that pipe without too much trouble?
They'll mark it, it won't be difficult for them to find.
Yes, they do, and we have Scott Evans of MKEC here who can answer any more detailed questions on that.
It's not difficult to find those once we have the blueprints and the valves are in. We normally, as soon as they put the water infrastructure in, we go in with our geode and GPS at all, and so normally we look for a valve, we can go straight to it, so it should not be an issue at all.
And there is a tracer wire laid with it.
Yes.
Laid with the water line.
But we like GPS. We prefer GPS because it doesn't move around. Tracer wire can move.
Who do you?
I make that motion.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Michael. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passed.
Item H.3 is the Arbor Creek Edition Phase Two Engineering Service Agreement with MKEC. We previously had the, kind of just a brief overview with Arbor Creek coming into the city on February 19th, 2019, the petitions for Phase One that we just kind of went over, May 6th, and then the previous engineering service agreement for Phase One was June 17th of 2019 for 345,185 dollars. Analysis of this agreement is the design engineers, MKEC, they will provide the design of the note bond finance improvements consisting of the paving, storm water, water system, and storm water sewer system improvements for Arbor Creek Phase Two specific to lots 19 through 26, Block 1, lots 8 through 14, Block 3, and lots 1 through 9, Block 4. We recommend MKEC as the firm provided the preliminary services for plating for Phase One, Phase Two, and all the design costs will be financed through the special assessment process or included in the authorizing expenditures and the issuance of the temporary notes that will be converted to the geo bond permanent financing upon maturity. And this is just the same maps that you see that reiterates graphically what they'll be designing, which is the paving, the sanitary sewer, the storm water, and the water distribution Payments to be made upon submission by the invoice that MKEC and approval by the city, it's 117,312 made in two payments with 74,949 dollars for design and then another 42,363 dollars for the construction administration portion.
Brian, I apologize, I just saw this, I should have asked a question before. Are the, and maybe send Scott's here, he can help, but the construction phase services, is that, is that construction staking or had?
Yeah.
That is construction staking, okay. No problem.
A non-engineer doing the invoice slide there.
No, that's fine, that's fine. Like I say, I missed the agenda items.
Like I said, my differential equations was a lot easier than yours, so I can just go right on through. It's recommended that the city council approve the proposed engineering service agreement for Arbor Creek Edition Phase Two with MKEC.
Motion to approve. Motion by Michael.
Second.
Second by Sarah. All in favor say aye.
Item H.4 is adopting Sedgwick County's Region G Hazard Mitigation Plan. Adoption's required to receive federal funding assistance for any natural or man-made disasters, essentially to get FEMA funds for disaster recovery, or is something that we are working on. Adoption's required for us to apply for threat mitigation funding opportunities. In accordance with the Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000, it essentially satisfies the requirements for funding and funding applications. Pertinent information related to Goddard's located on pages 517 to 518, there's specifically eight items contained within this 592-page plan that can be located at sedgwickcounty.org.media/30271/mitigation-planned.pf. Said that for our viewing audience. The proposed resolution adopts the Sedgwick County Mitigation Plan, it's the city's official plan. The proposed resolution states the city will submit an adopted resolution to, oop, to the Kansas Department of Emergency Management in FEMA to enable our final approval, and it also further directs the plan resolution to be published once in the paper of record. Adoption of the resolution qualifies us for funding mitigation planning and recovery grants from state and federal agencies. Adoption of the proposed resolution does incur a small publication cost. This has been reviewed and approved to form by our city attorney, Ryan Peck. If there are no questions over this, and this is done every four to five years, so it's just updated slightly. It is the recommendation of staff, the city council adopt the proposed resolution adopting the Kansas Homeland Security Region G Mitigation Plan.
Is this exciting thing that they were doing at Sedgwick County 10 years ago, where you imagine with all the different surrounding cities in case of a big disaster?
Similar to that, yes, sir. I know, I began serving in 2008 here in Goddard, and I know we did one in 10, we did another in 15, we did another one in 19, and now we're doing one in 22. It's 21 for 22.
Is it the same plan where they want the city officials to join and train or whatever in case of a disaster?
No, that's just a component part of it. What this is doing is actually identifying certain hazards and items that the city can undertake that'll qualify for hazard mitigation funds or disaster recovery in the event that we have an incident. But the ICS stuff is what you're referring to.
I think the plan you're talking about was the, the plan that we adopted last year at one of the council meetings that was kind of a disaster plan on just our specific part of it, where we outlined like what all public works can take care of, what we can handle, things like that.
It was more specific to the response.
More questions? No? Do I have a motion? Motion by Doc. Motion by Michael.
Second.
Second by Sarah. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Honorable mayor and council, item H.5 is water well number four repair. I am really hoping this is the last water well repair I bring to you for a long time. Very much so. If you remember, in April of 2020, well four developed vibration. At that time, council approved the removal and inspection rebuild of the well column. Once the well column was pulled, the inspection showed no damage to the well casing, the vibration in the column was repaired. The well was put back together and was functioning normally until May of 2021, when the casing filled with sand and created a load on the motor, very similar to what seven did, to where the well would fire up immediately, heavy load the motor and shut down, couldn't pump. Essentially locked up in the casing. Because well seven was down, I went to the city administrative office, he granted an emergency authority to have this well checked out. We were hoping it could be brought back operational quickly and easily, but unfortunately it wasn't. Upon inspection, Clark Well found that the well casing had shifted and approximately 80 feet of the 150-foot deep well had filled with sand, and that's what caused the lockup. We don't know 100% cause of the casing shift, but we do know that in the four days prior to this well going down, we had three small earthquakes, and Clark Well said this misalignment could be consistent with that earthquake, and I'm hoping once this is all said and done, if we do have earthquake insurance as a city, hopefully we can make a claim and maybe recoup some money on this. We don't know, I would like to try though. Right now, well four is inoperable and out of service. Repairing it requires similar steps as well seven did. They're going to install a 90-foot, 10.75-inch diameter liner inside the current 12-inch casing. After that liner is in, they'll initially remove 10 feet of sand, put the liner in. Once that liner is in, they will remove the rest of the sand, and as long as the column is straight at that point and the well is usable, they will go through the existing column motor and pump, and it will be reinstalled. I don't anticipate having to do anything to those because they were all just inspected a year ago. Some of the, this is a cost estimate because a lot of these well things, they don't know until they get in what the costs are exactly, but this is work summary to date, which was authorized by the emergency authorization, and you can see the items there. Basically, it was the diagnosis of where we're sitting, running the inspection camera down, those kind of items. The liner installation estimate is, and that cost was 17,700, the liner installation estimate, which will include the steps I spoke of previously, is just a touch, estimated a touch over 26,000. And then we got pump repair, and this is a worst-case estimate, which I don't think we'll have to do, would be another $32,000. That's 76,000. I've asked for a 30% contingency. I don't anticipate needing the 7, all the 76, but I thought we're going to come once and get enough money that if we come up with, I don't know, as we can take care of it. So I'm requesting 99,000 for this well. That expenditure will be allocated 82830, 8240, that's water reserve collection and treatment. Really legal, just approved as to form. Any questions on this item?
I have a question, Bert. This, we can go back and use existing, it's a turbine pump, right? This is not submersible.
Correct.
This is a turbine pump.
Yes, this is a turbine pump, and so everything was just gone through a year ago. It looked good then, we're going to continue to use it. No building replacement on this one, no concrete, that's a, you know, a block building. Doesn't have to be torn down to remove this.
We are doing a building on the other one, right?
Yeah, we do have to do a building.
That's all been approved and?
Yes, that's all been approved. On the other one, just a quick update since Matt had questioned, this week we're pouring the pad. The liner has been put in, it's been test pumped, we're pouring the pad, and they're going to come in Friday, they're going to install the submersible well and everything, get the piping all hooked up. Early next week, we will, we will build the building around it, then Atlas Electric will come in, install the VFD and all the wiring, and we'll be running. I'd like to be running the week after 4th of July, and we need, we need to be running because right now, our wells are running hard. We've got two of our four wells down, and our two wells have run, and we've seen 16 and 18-hour runtimes on those. And that's just, that's sooner or later, we're going to have broken parts on those, running them that hard, and plus, we're bumping up on our pearl well water pumping limit. So at the end of the year, we'll have to, when four and seven are up again, we'll have to shut five and eight down to reserve that pumping limit, but I really, we'll need these, at least this other well up. I need to get four online, but three's a heck of a lot better than two. Any additional questions?
It's left in the water reserve fund there.
It's going to drop it down to about 50,000, correct, Matt?
Yeah, but we're also transferring back in 50,000 this year, so.
And?
And also, you know, if we do receive, if we do recoup costs of insurance, that money will be transferred back, that money will be deposited into the water reserve fund. And also, if we don't get this recouped through insurance, this would qualify for the federal grant money due to COVID that we've been talking about, so this would be, yeah, this would be a portion of, a portion of that could be used for this as well, for this and the other.
Which one's the seven?
Seven, well, and a little update on the cost on seven, I talked to them today, and a rough estimate right now is, we've got $100,000 of what was approved by council. Right now, the rough estimate is Clark's going to cost is going to come in about 60,000. The wiring and VFD is going to be 9700, that's with Atlas Electric. The concrete and the building, we're going to have about 5,000 dollars in it. So if everything works right, I'm hoping to come in about 75,000 on that well. So that's 25,000 less than was authorized, but that buffer was nice to have so we didn't have to come back to council and delay this longer. My biggest concern here with these wells, with this heat, and if we get 100-plus degrees again for a prolonged amount of time, and our wells are running hard, I don't want to say water restrictions, but I'm going to say we may have to think of something to slow down our usage because if we have one more well to go down right now, we're, we will be in trouble, I'll be honest.
Let's get it done. One more question? I have four wells along time.
I know, seven was built in 78. I don't know when this one was built. And seven was really just wear, you know, the column wore, or the shaft wore, and it blew a hole in the screen because water was spraying out of it. This one is one year later, it's out of alignment, and that's the only thing we can think of is the earthquakes. It's just not a normal thing for our column to get out of alignment, I don't believe, is it the Harland liner?
Um, no, not typically, no.
I think we were thinking, am I right, Brian, where we had an agreement with the city of Wichita, we needed emergency things, we crank the valve, use their water?
No, sir, there was, no, there used to be a cross connection there in front of, well, by 101st Street, where it used to go through on the southeast corner, and it was removed at the time that that intersection improvement happened, and it was previously essentially abandoned by the city when, when the city conveyed the Turkey Creek service area, which was originally in the city's service delivery area, it was conveyed to the city of Wichita, and at that time, when those lines and all that cross connection stuff went away. And that was done, I want to say in 2004 to 2006, and I don't know, that may be before.
But I also had a connection with rural water.
Yes, we do have that, and I will say, we had to use that to assist them one time.
We've done it twice since I've been here.
And what we've ended up having to do is, if we do activate that, it's un-metered, and we have to crack. and we have to crack it. Because if we, if we do anything more than a crack, because of how their system runs, we drain both of our tanks.
Their system is so low.
And so we could, we could threaten a boil water notice for our customers to provide them water if we just cranked it open.
Yeah, when we provided them water, it was one time when they were working on their tower, and barely opened that valve, and they get quite a bit of flow, and then the way we had measured it is what was going into their tower. So there's not a meter at the connection, but basically, there's a rough metering by how much water they were running into their tower of our system.
But as far as us getting water from them, that's probably not too feasible.
I don't think we could.
We don't, we don't need that. And we have over a million gallon storage capacity currently.
And we, and we generally don't have any issues. The heat, along with two wells being down, just really had those wells running hard.
And, and I think we confirmed about the first of the year that we're pumping around 200 million gallon annually.
Yes.
And our water rights are 350, 360, I think.
Total.
And they're not totally perfected yet, correct?
Right.
Correct. So we, there's some wiggle room there, I think, in the future for growth. And Harlan and I have discussed this, in the future, if we need more water, we can run wells harder, but that's, you know, comes with, with parts breakage and things.
And as, as you know, from our capital improvement plan, even though it's not in there as a line item, we are always anticipate looking at proceeding with exploring additional wells in the equus banks.
And I, on that note, I did recently enter an agreement with Brad Vincent to do, do just that. It's relatively cheap, under $2,000. He's going to do a full study to determine where adequate water rights are available, and whether that worked for the city.
Have you done surveys like that before, Harlan? You found up there around 13?
I think, I think Vincent, yeah, groundwater associates did, but now, I think they told us last time we talked, that opportunity's gone away, I think.
Yes, farmers have been buying up these water rights like crazy, all south of us, north of us. And so this is something I wanted to get done, in case we have to jump on it. It's, it'd be time to at least buy the water rights and secure that. We don't have to build a main, then we don't drill the well down. But we want to make sure if the water rights are there, we have an opportunity.
Okay, do I have a motion?
No motion.
Motion by Sarah.
Aye.
Second by Michael. All in favor say aye.
Aye. Thank you, Council.
Item H.6, zoning amendment for C2 General Business District.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, this is an item that we discussed a little bit, well, I should say more in depth on May 10th, and Councilmember Leland had the opportunity to read through the minutes from that meeting. It was pretty extensive, but we had a joint session of the Planning Commission and City Council, and one item that came up was amending the C2 General Commercial District to allow for more flexibility in design. And so this is going to kind of be that item. Planning Commission already approved it, and so now it's coming before the City Council for final approval, and then it'll be, take effect 30 days after publication in the city newspaper. So, commercial zoning with the residential component is typically referred to as mixed use. It is a structure that hosts both commercial and residential uses, and often seen as commercial on the first floor and residential above. This type of land use is becoming more prominent across the nation for development, is a positive trend for development as it introduces more density for potential commercial customers in a smaller area, as well as increasing commercial property value. Currently, the only zoning that will allow for this is the Central Business District C1, which is only a couple of blocks from Santa Fe to Third. Amending the General Business District C2 to allow for residential mixed use types would open the zoning classification up to host more residential rental properties on commercial lots. So on May 10th, 2021, the Planning Commission and the governing bodies and the council discussed the idea of commercial mixed use and residential uses in a commercial district in detail. The Community Development Director, me and myself, created a draft amendment reflecting these comments, which is being presented today. So, current regulations are found in Article 4, zoning districts. C1 says specifically, which is the Central Business District, a dwelling unit constructed in conjunction with and above the first floor of business districts, business establishments, I should say, and that's in the Central Business District. C2 says specifically, no building shall be used for residential purposes except an existing residence, which is a legal non-conforming use. And the C2 General Business District regulations have been amended in the form of a draft that will be displayed on the following slides and is included in Exhibit H.2A. Green lettering shows the text to be included, red lettering for strike through shows text to be removed. Any black lettering, just as left as is. So these are permitted uses. As you can see at the very bottom, what we're adding is childcare facilities, residential units in conjunction with and above commercial uses, apartments, condos, boat and RV storage. The reason we're adding childcare facilities is, it's kind of being a little redundant. Typically, I would consider childcare facilities to be personal services, so you'd say it's already in existence. It's just a question that's come up several times, is a childcare facility a personal service, or would you consider it a service business? And so I just added it as a childcare facility in permitted uses, just so it removes all doubt. And then we have residential units in conjunction with and above commercial uses, very similar to our Central Business District, apartments, condos, and then we added boat and RV storage. And the reason we add a boat and RV storage is because the question came up about conditional use permits in certain residential districts, and the whole idea of where our boat and RV storage is allowed besides industrial. And the question that came up would be, well, if we allow it in commercial, it would help alleviate the strain that a lot of conditional use permits have been coming up for, in the county and in the city of Goddard. So, Planning Commission accepted that, and this was also in line with what occurred with the conditional use permit on Maple, and that was in the county. And so this would help alleviate that, those non-conforming uses, or anything that would be considered a conditional use in the future. They specifically, so we struck, no building shall be used for residential purposes except on existing residents, which is illegal non-conform, we struck that out, and we added no single-family detached housing or manufactured housing units. The Planning Commission wanted to explicitly say, no duplexes or multifamily developments units at grade, with the exception of those listed above. And the reason they said that, and the reason it was included, is because at some point, if commercial is leaning too far towards residential, where it's just going to be duplexes or multifamily, it should be rezoned. Rezoning would have to go before the Planning Commission and back before City Council. But this allows it to say that, we're not going to have any single-family, no manufactured, no traditional residential, but if it's mixed in with commercial on bottom, residential on top, that would be allowed, or a high-rise development like apartments or condos would be allowed. But this is kind of add that extra standard in there, and then the rest of it is as is, exterior lighting, all businesses, services and storage. And things, these have not, this has not changed. So there's a small cost associated with publication, it's approved as to form, is recommended at City Council, first, one, waive the reading of the ordinance as a motion, and two, approve the changes to zoning classification, C2 General Business District outlined in Exhibit H.2A, and that would require a roll call. But I will open it up for questions, and I can put it back here if you would like to take a look at that again.
Any questions? You can have one dwelling above a business, or it could be more than one dwelling?
You can have multiple dwellings above a business, or you can have a high-rise development like apartments or condos, but you can have just duplexes at grade, or multifamily, fourplexes at grade, or just a traditional duplex, or twin home, or a single-family house, or manufactured in a commercial district. It would all have to be in tandem with above, or something like an apartment or a condo development.
Are we going to do this? Wait for the reading of the ordinance.
Okay. Second.
Motion by Larry, second by Michael, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Roll.
Make a motion to approve the changes to the zoning classification, C2 General Business District outlined in Exhibit H.2A.
Okay, motion by Sarah.
Aye.
Second by Michael. Roll.
Councilmember Zimmerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Leland.
Yes.
Councilmember Proctor.
Yes.
Mayor Larkin.
Yes.
That is ordinance number 870. Thank you very much.
I would like to say it's nice having a community development director that is still planning down to its essence, and is getting still understandable. Thank you. The splash pad system, essentially, this is a receive and file. Thank you, Thatcher. Report, and we thought we would go ahead, and as we've had questions and folks concerned about the city splash pad with respect to recent occurrences, we'll, we'll show the PowerPoint slide for, for this discussion item. And I'll kind of hit the high points, and detailed questions or additional commentary is felt needed by our two subject matter experts in the room, our city engineer, Harlan Foraker, and our director of public works, Mr. Brooke Brandenburg, can, can chime in as needed and can answer those questions that you may have in greater detail. A lot of this, particularly for those folks that were here for the park board discussions when we designed our own new, know that, like most folks, we wanted to look at recycling the water as much as possible, but upon the initial overview, we realized that it was really not cost-effective, especially long-term, and that those of us that are familiar with, with pool maintenance and whatnot, know that it can be problematic trying to keep things in balance, especially if you're unable to actually view the water itself, and oftentimes those containment tanks, that's very difficult to do. Recently, you may be aware that Tanganyika Wildlife Park appears to have had some issues with its splash park. Tanganyika utilizes a recirculation system in which private system well water is also used as a water source for the continual resource through the play features. For the city's portion and our own well, we don't, we don't utilize private well water, we utilize potable water. So in accordance with our KDHE operating permit, the city waters tested daily, and all violations are reported immediately to KDHE. Any violation also requires a public notification of the violation. The city of Goddard splash pad has never had any issues of contamination of any type, bacterial, chemical or otherwise. Our splash pad is designed to use the fresh potable water or city water one time, and then that water is discharged through the play feature and down into the drains that then travels through our sanitary system and back into the wastewater plant for treatment and discharge into the Dry Creek Basin, which eventually through the Arkansas makes its way to the Gulf. The system's designed to keep the water supply separate from the drainage system, so there's absolutely no recirculation of water. The city conducts daily chlorine residual tests at various locations throughout our distribution system. That's the entire city system. The city submits biweekly water samples to KDHE licensed third-party lab for analysis, which the results are then submitted directly to KDHE. We test for chlorine residual, presence of heavy metals, the bacterial, viral and other organism contaminants. The city has not experienced a violation in recent memory. The city also samples our wastewater inflow, our raw sewage, which is known as influent, and then our outflow, once it's purified, and again, goes out into the Dry Creek Basin, and that's known as effluent. And we do that daily. We also submit biweekly water samples to KDHE, to that same licensed third-party lab for analysis, with the results being submitted directly to KDHE. The city tests our municipal swimming pool every day, one hour prior to public use, and then every two hours that the pool is open for public use. The city splash pads tested daily for a minimum chlorine residual of 1.1 parts per million. This is not an issue, as Brooke and our Public Works Department, they keep our municipal system at an average of 1.4 to 1.6 parts per million. We also have, important to note, three of our Public Works employees are nationally certified aquatic facility operators, and that's through a program that's hosted and sponsored with the training by KDHE. And those are our Public Works employees, Mike Holmes, our lead, Gary Medley, our senior, and then Nick Ball, who you recently had the honor of meeting and interacting with for employee recognition. The splash pad descriptions, we use a fresh drain-a-way system, also kind of an open system, where potable water goes through the play area, and then it travels back through the drain, down the drain and into our wastewater system, where Tanganyika's is a recirculation system, the water's recycled, treated, stored in the tank, and then back out into the play feature. This is a diagram that, when we were considering which type of system to use for our splash pad design, this is the city's water system. And the water comes in, and then essentially goes through the control valves to the various features, and then down the drain where number four is at, and on into the city sanitary sewer system, which is number six. So the purple is your freshwater supply coming in. Your blue is the pressurized water within the feature, the play structure system. And then the gray is the gray water that goes down the drain and into the sanitary sewer system. And this is a simpler analogy, and I thank Thatcher for putting this together for me because it, I was frustrated even just trying to get the dots there. The potable water through our, our system comes in, goes through the splash pad, goes down the drain on the splash pad located in the center and a couple of other areas, and then down to our wastewater treatment facility. A recirculation system comes in, with the purple being the primary water source, into a tank that then comes out and into the features, and then back around, and so you're seeing that it comes from the tank, and there's just, it's a continual loop. Essentially, a recirculation system, you can have it coming from a potable or well that, if it's from a well, it's treated, or it can go directly into the storage tank. So it can go either way. You have the splash pad feature, and then the tank through a filtration process, and then back, it's just, so it's a continual loop at this point, after the, the water source. Do you have any questions at all over the city's system in particular, is that's what we know and what we're familiar with? I will say that, that we did verify that Tanganyika system from our water that goes into that area has a backflow prevention valve in place. As it's a new structure, it's not subject to inspection until, you know, after, after the closure and before, before the end of the year. So they're still within that window of being fresh and new.
How many gallons of water do we use?
How many gallons? I'd have to look, I don't know off the top of my head, but I can get that to you and let you know. We do have a meter, but off the top of my head, I don't know.
If our wells start struggling, we can maybe stop that.
If, if we needed to, we definitely could.
Because it's the same water, in that fact.
Yeah, ours does not.
Yes.
Yeah.
Comes from our water system.
Oh yes, their water comes from our water system. I'm sorry, I don't know what they're using on ours.
Our splash pad is.
Our splash pad, yes, comes from our water system, and it is metered. I don't know how many gallons per day, though, off the top of my head.
The reason why we're receiving files is pretty much because we just have had phone calls.
Right.
In regards to our water.
Correct, and we want you and the public to be informed as to how our system operates and that we're in no danger of something like that similarly occurring at our splash pad.
If I may, Brian, address our water.
Yes, sir.
Our water, our water's perfectly safe. We have complaints about our water because of the mineral content, and it's hard. It's hard water. But our water is perfectly safe, and we are very diligent about testing that water, keeping that water safe, because that's, that's the lifeblood of our community, and we can't have bad water flowing. And so we're, we're very serious about our water. Yes, it's hard. Some people don't like that, but that's another, that's another issue beyond it being safe.
Yeah.
Considering the circumstances, is it out of line to request an inspection of the backflow system at Tanganyika, just to make sure we're not, that it is?
I, I think we could, we could certainly look to request that. Now, I don't know what the, what the, what our, what our, yeah, what our legal litmus would be, because honestly, we've never had to deal with anything like this. I spoke to Tanganyika this morning, and as of right now, it's shut down. And they're waiting on pretty much documents, on everything, so, I don't, that's a good question, I don't know if we should or shouldn't, but I'm saying everything is undetermined yet on what, what the real problem is.
The, the, the backflow was installed in August 25th of 2020, so it's super new. Typically, we require a one-year inspection every year, so after it's installed, you have one year, and then you have to inspect.
and then you have to inspect it next year. After five years, it has to be replaced. It's so relatively new, I wouldn't necessarily worry about the backflow, but if you would like, we could pay for an inspection, or just ask, you know, politely, if Tanganika would like to cover the cost of a follow-up inspection on the backflow, with there being some general concerns, you know, just for overall safety and transparency sake, we could require it. Or ask it politely.
Well, and like you said, it's brand-newish, but so is the system that appears to have failed there. Filtration, I know it's a different mechanism.
It doesn't take long for water that's recirculating to lose its chlorine residual. In my opinion, it should be treated like a swimming pool, where you got a five to eight parts per million residual, and it's tested daily. Your acidity says that your pH is, you know, 7.2 to 7.5. It should be treated like that.
How large is the water service? Is this just a one-inch?
Two-inch, two-inch meter. And if it only runs a splash pad while it's shut off, we can literally go turn the valve off, while we're waiting for inspection. But for them to backflow into our system, it would allow, it would require a low pressure in our system, such as a major main break, or we get a house fire, and we have a couple hydrants cracked wide, and they're feeding a lot of water. For our pressure to go down and there's to come up, they don't regularly have enough pressure to push against our water.
And then with our residual chlorine amount, as we discussed, any sort of infiltration like that by bacteria would likely be killed from the sanitization.
Yeah, and the way residual real quickly works is you put an amount of chlorine in water, and it takes one molecule of chlorine for one molecule of contaminant. And once it neutralizes the contaminant, that molecule disappears. So when we say residual, we are measuring the amount of chlorine left in the water after it has decontaminated it and basically cleaned it up. And now chlorine will continue to work as long as it's in the water.
Okay. One more question.
Thank you for the information.
Thank you, Brian.
And thank you to everyone that worked on this. Itemized, the city administrators report, and we'll keep this relatively brief. Some images of the star bond, looking back to the south. You can see the May 13 with progress, and the second story is currently underway. Arbor Creek, you can tell that there's been some weather delays there with the recent rains. Again, another view, looking back to the west. And we have 41 lots sold out of the 59 in Phase 1, so 69% of the lots at large are still available. Cloverleaf, this is looking back to the east northeast. All 50 lots in Phase 1 are sold, Phase 2 is going to begin selling soon. Phase 2 has 46 lots, with Phase 3, 34. Elk Ridge, you can see some new footings being poured there. Just another view of a separate home site. Rustic Creek, with where they're at in the stage, you can tell there's water standing, so there's going to be a slight delay there due to the recent rains. Exciting to say that tomorrow morning is the Brahms opening.
There were people in the drive-thru.
Ice cream for breakfast.
On the way here, there were people in the drive-thru.
Yeah, I'm going to have a shake tomorrow.
Which they might have been like, family.
Could have been the event.
I want to be a Brahms.
So, City Hall will be in a lactose coma tomorrow. Community center focus groups, we'll have a June 24 draft findings review, July 8 open house. We'll have a park board review on July 22, and the council presentation will be August 2. I wanted to touch on ARPA, as there was, the governor's office had done a distribution, and we were contacted by the local media, as other cities were, and opted not to provide any comment, because we hadn't been given any guidance. So we really didn't feel comfortable commenting on other than what we know, which is that from a municipal standpoint, there is some non-municipal funding opportunities that we're working on to facilitate, which is essentially applying for funds to address economic impacts caused by COVID-19, with assistance to households, small businesses, and to assist nonprofits impacted industries, including tourism, through individualized direct grant programs. And once we have more information and a framework for that, then we'll certainly work to facilitate Goddard's qualifying groups to those funding streams. The city will receive $727,584.88. That can be found at covid.kas.gov/NEU. Essentially, what this money can be used for is to replace lost revenue to the public sector, provide premium pay for essential workers, invest in water, sewer, stormwater and broadband infrastructure. Finance Director Matt Lonz initiated the distribution process to receive the first of two payments. The second will be after the first of the year, around December 31. The funds must be identified for use by December 31, 2022, and must be expensed or returned by December 31, 2024. We'll present an agenda item in greater detail in July to identify the potential use of funds once more information's fully known. And then, again, to congratulate Chief Ferris on 31 years of service, even though he went to the dark side, from the fire side. And then we'll have a July 6 meeting, which will be Tuesday. And kind of the big thing is, we'll have the public hearing on 101 North Cedar, and we'll begin discussing sign regulation changes that we had previously discussed at the Planning Commission joint meeting. And then July 19, we'll have second quarter departmental reports and some budget workshops, and little things here and there, particularly as it relates to development and some issuances, but that's kind of a dynamic date at this point. So whether or not that's July 19, or the first meeting in August, or the tip note issuance on Phase 2, I don't know yet. For Arbor Creek, I'm sorry, that we discussed earlier today. So that concludes my report, if there are no questions. Thank you. Larry, what do you have?
Well, I'm a friend of, being part of our community, and putting you up, raising our community if you want to be part of us, and take over our project. And when I saw the number of years before him, that were impressive. So, when I saw our friend was going, I knew I made the right decision.
Appreciate it. He scared me during my interview. He sat right here, like this, the whole time. Didn't say whatever, like, oh man, this is going to be brutal. But he's been a great friend the last four years, too.
Sarah?
Yes, thank you, Chief, for all your years of service in Goddard and elsewhere. Appreciate it. Enjoy retirement, and Sam's brother may come visit, you've got the language.
We'll talk about that.
Yeah. That's all I got.
Thanks for your service.
Thanks, Mike.
And also, oh.
No, go ahead.
You're going to get.
I didn't cut you off.
You're going to get right.
I said, I'm going to get a ball of that.
That's better, right? I was real appreciative of the work that went into Goddard and I out. So, thanks for putting that together, for working on that.
Thatcher.
That goes for that.
And I got to thank Brooks' guys, George and Alan, for helping me set up and tear down, they were great, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Thatcher. Thank you, guys, for researching and trying to educate the public on the problem of Tanganika, making sure that we're okay. Fred, I think I got a story about Fred, but it's about the reverse. When I started.
She might want to turn that mic off.
I thought Fred was like, whoa, man, I don't know about this young guy. A little scary. Fred, thank you so much for your service.
Thanks.
Aradi, that's all I have. A motion to adjourn?
No motion.
Motion by Sarah, second by Michael, all in favor?
I have a, okay, all right.
All in favor, say aye.